Meeting in order, start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes of May 18th.
I'll move to approve minutes for May 18th.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment totaling $660,257.98.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a discussion on funding Harden County Development Alliance. This is a question that keeps coming up. We went through the budgets. The question is asked if there could be any more funding available, correct? And here we are.
And we currently have $30,000?
Thirty thousand is what we've budgeted for this year and next year.
Okay. And that's out of the general fund?
It's out of general, out of lost.
The $30,000 is just out of general?
Well, there's $45,000 budgeted out of lost also.
Out of lost, right. But that's for projects.
It can be paid however we choose. Which last year, I believe, it was paid half out of, or this current year is half out of, general, half out of. It's not?
No. It's all out of general.
It's all out of general, okay.
I just think with the number, I mean, the number of years that they've, well, that Cindy has worked especially, and I think Jefferson, I think they're both doing a great job, and we've asked them to go around to all the other towns to meet with their councils and everything. I think we're putting, expecting a little more out of them, or making towns more aware of what's expected out of them. And mileage alone is probably going to be at least $500 just for them to get, you know, on the agendas for all these, visiting all the towns and whatever, the expenses. Due to the trip, I'm going to a conference, I know what the conferences cost, and expenses there. I guess I would just say that their expenses are not getting any less than ours are. I mean, they're, those expenses continue to go up, and I would just like to see an increase. And I've, I mean, anything from $5,000 to $10,000 to split between the two of them, and take that out of the local option sales tax money, and, you know, which it's already budgeted for the general fund part, so we wouldn't be able to increase that at all. But I would like to see an increase come out of the local option sales tax fund to give them a boost to go towards expenses. And that's, I guess that's my opinion, so.
Your thoughts?
I was waiting on yours. Do you want to give $5,000 to $10,000, or do you want to pay the mileage? Do you want them to be able to submit mileage and pay that out of the lost funds and their, all these other classes that they're taking? Or do you just want to give a lump sum and that's it?
It would be much cleaner and easier for the auditor's office if we did the lump sum.
We currently have forty-five...
It would be less work for them, too. I mean...
We currently have the $45,000 there, that's for projects. You guys are aware of this. Projects, if you come in with a project, or any town comes in with a project, we could use this money. That's why it's budgeted. If it doesn't get used, it rolls back into the fund into the following year.
And grows.
And grows, so that larger projects keep coming, or if more money is needed, the fund grows higher and higher. So, that's why I'm asking, do you want to fund it that way, or do you want to fund it just in a total dollar amount?
My thought is, this year would be the exception to the rule, where we would take the additional out of that local option sales tax money, and consider that their base, I don't want to say wage, because it's not really a wage, but our base contribution. It's easier to track that way, as far as what we're actually giving to them, rather than having to go to different expense line items and see what we're giving them. So I would just recommend this as being an increase to their base wage. I know, I don't know how many years, do you know how many years you've been at the $30,000?
We were at 25 since 2003, and then we received a $5,000 increase, I believe it was a year ago.
Year ago.
That was divided by three different entities, so each entity saw $5,000, $1,000 to $2,000, something around in there. Just a reminder, Harden County still remains eighth out of eight counties in our Mid-Iowa Growth Region at the lowest amount per capita and the lowest amount contributed by county supervisors to economic development. So, and even though we are still the highest population among all of those eight counties. So it would be nice to see us to be more competitive among the other counties that are actually smaller in size than what we are.
And to, I mean, and for the $5,000 increase since 2003, I mean, I just, I still feel that it's being underfunded, and I think that's, I mean, economic development is what's going to save the counties, in my opinion. And I think we have two very active people for Iowa Falls and Actley that we have the opportunity to tap into, so.
I agree all the way through, other than when you're, there's different ways that counties and communities pay their economic developers, so I agree, we need to adjust our funds appropriately. And comparing to other counties, that's always a hard thing, you know?
Yep.
Here, economic development is something that could never be overfunded, because it's always needed.
Mm-hmm.
But where do you want to fund it from, and how do you want it funded? I mean, it, what you do is great. I just want to know where, would you say that, what's the seventh county rated at for funding?
They are at $40,000 a year.
Forty thousand, which is $10,000 higher, okay.
Yes, and that, all the figures that I'm referring to go into their operations. It's not for special projects.
Do any of them have special project money?
There are some that do, that then go back and request, or there is a county that has a fund that has been built up similar to the loss, that they can pull for special incentives for companies that are locating there. But that's above and beyond what they, their annual allotment.
And I know you compared to the other counties, and one of the things you compare is Harden County is the only unique one that has an alliance with the other economic developments, correct?
It's the only one that has two, well now, two entities that serve economic development for the county.
Right.
Correct.
The other ones are county employees serving the public. Is that right?
Most of them are.
Yep. So, I mean, I'm open for any ideas.
A question, do you foresee any projects that would be needing access to the $40,000 or $45,000 that we have budgeted for projects?
Well, I could see, I could see there's a couple of projects within Harden County that it might come in handy for certain studies or due diligence, that type of thing.
Do you know how much?
I have no idea at this point. There's nothing right now on the drawing board, as far as things in mind.
I like how we set up our lost funds for economic development. I'd really like to see all the cities do that as well. That would really help out.
What do you mean, the cities?
Our lost funds are just for the rural areas. The cities don't set up a lost fund. Some do, some don't. If they were to set up a percentage of their lost funds in the city to go to economic development, it just helps grow economic development throughout the entire county.
Well, and if you stipulate that the lost funds for economic development can really be spent in the county, the unincorporated areas, then that limits ability to access it as well.
Right, and we haven't made that stipulation.
Well, you just mentioned it, so...
What I'm saying is, we could have more entities, all the cities doing the same that we're doing, if they did a percentage, where all that money could be used for economic development in the entire county, for their cities, for the rural, wherever it goes, it helps support everything.
But I don't think they can...
I can't make that...
They can use it for their own city, but I don't think they can budget to have it used out of the county.
Which would help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you say taking, use the $10,000, for example, do you think that would take us down too low in the project funding money? Going from $45,000 down to $35,000, as far as projects you might foresee?
Well, I mean, you just don't know in the future, but it certainly would help us in making sure that we continue in our efforts for economic development by having that additional funds, you know, for operational costs.
Anything you guys are talking about, you're talking about effective July 1st, correct?
Yes.
I threw that out there.
Yeah, starting July 1st, yes. Does anybody else have any thoughts, or?
I would like to help support more of the operational costs versus just, it's opposite of what you're saying, but if they submit bills, if they submit mileage, that can be reimbursed easier. And it's all trackable, accountable for what we're giving the money for.
We don't have any line items set up for them, for those kind of expenses. I, I mean, do you agree, Jessica, I think that would be more work in your office, as far as trying to pay them mileage and keeping track of that kind of thing? Because you're going to have one line for Cindy, one line for Jefferson, mileage or expenses?
I can set it up however you want, if you are asking me, which I would prefer. I'd rather have one line item than make one lump sum payment, but I don't, I don't get to make that.
That's, yeah.
If you said, I need to set it up a certain way, that's how I do it.
But it would be simpler, and I would just like to see, I prefer to do it towards a lump sum, and it would be considered their base, an increase to their base that we give them. So...
We can work on, you know, since it's coming up so quickly, July, we can work on incrementals and, and kind of do a tweener between where both of you are at. Maybe not do the $10,000, but look for that for the following year. And, you know, what do you think?
Or if it's something that we could possibly revisit later in the year?
Plus, it would be nice to see how much they need, you know, we're new to working out of our lost funds for projects, and it does build, and we need to see how much we're spending out of that annually. We can be careful, take small steps, but incremental steps with a goal in the future. Just discussion.
And I realize anything's better than nothing.
Well...
So like $5,000 this year, $10,000 next year? You know, with a goal of that, depending on, but I'm still open for discussion.
I would like to see an additional $7,500 to be split between the two, to start. So I guess I would make a motion to increase their base by the $7,500 to be split between the two for fiscal year 2016-17, to be paid out of the Economic Development Fund, or the lost fund?
Lost fund.
Lost fund.
Split equally or proportionally?
Are they split equally now?
I need a second before we go to discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? There we go.
Is your funding split equally now, or I could just...
The original funding that was set up between the three entities is split proportionally. The third portion of the funding that has switched with the resignation of debt crosser is split half and half between our agencies, because we are covering the rest of the county as a team effort.
But that will have to be, come July 1st, that'll change either way, correct? You're just finishing out this year, half and half, or?
That will...
It's agreed upon, you guys, if you guys can't agree, we decide, right?
Correct. And we have not had that discussion at this point.
Right.
Can I amend my motion by including to be distributed at the discretion of the economic developers?
That's already in the contract, or the 2080.
Yeah, so I mean, it would just be referring to that. I mean, so it wouldn't be...
I don't know what you're amending. You just want to raise $7,500. So to amend how it's being divided, it's being divided according to what the contract said, or their 2080 says. So I don't know if you need to amend it anyway.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let's follow withdraw that.
It's okay, I need a second.
No.
Any more discussion? The motion was to take $7,500 from lost funds and add to the budget in 1617, economic development.
Correct.
I feel that, I feel that I still would like the money to go to projects, not just into the budget. I understand it's a lot easier and cleaner. I don't have a problem spending the money, that's what it's there for, is economic development. But I want to know how it's being spent, and whether it's the mileage, the extra work out in the communities, submitting back to us more. I know you meet with us monthly anyway and bring this up, but I have a hard time just throwing that amount back in just to the budget. I still want more accountability, and that's why I say, if it was $2,500, I probably wouldn't be so bad on it and still want to pay more projects. But $7,500 just into the budget, and we still have money to build in the lost funds as well.
I thought it's next year, this would, this additional would be budgeted in the general fund, along with the current $30,000.
But that's at budget time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And unless we...
I brought up the idea of incremental, so that we can evaluate this year and see if that's the direction we wanted to go, and then revisit it again following year. But we're kind of doing that, just, you're just not quite agreeing on...
The incremental.
Yeah, incremental. But, but yes, evaluation next year is needed on how this year goes.
Any more discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries. Next is discussion on trip to Washington DC regarding tiger grant application. Cindy, this is one big one you've been involved in.
Well, we had mentioned to the supervisors, we are planning a trip in June, and I wanted to know if any of the supervisors are interested in attending. Currently, the mayor and Jody Anderson, the city manager, and myself are planning to attend. I have reached out to our legislators in the state to see if they are interested in also attending, but need to know from the supervisors if you would decide to send somebody on this trip.
And Cindy, this is on the 21st, and are you staying the night of the 21st, or flying in on the 20th, and then meeting on the 21st? Is that correct?
We are staying at least one night, but it might be structured that some will not all go in at the same time. The city, the mayor and Jody have a city council meeting the night before, so they will be leaving...
So they are going to go to the council meeting?
Yes.
And they aren't rescheduling?
They will be leaving early the next morning, so it's up to the discretion of the supervisor, whether they want to go in at that time or go the previous day. But, you know, we anticipate only one night stay regardless.
Same format as last year, where we're presenting to our reps?
Senator Grassley, Senator Ernst, and Congressman King.
And just those three?
At this point, there is one other legislator I'm trying to get an appointment with, that's involved with the Transportation Subcommittee, so.
Okay.
We'll see if that works out.
How much was the grant for, again?
So you're asking a little more this year, aren't you?
We are asking for $12 million.
$12 million. I think it's a large opportunity, and I think we should be present.
Yep.
That's what I feel. And I went last year, and I, I think that getting our foot in the door last year, and I thought we made a good impression with the people we met with, a follow-up this year, especially asking more, is not a bad idea. So, I'd be glad to represent the county again, and, but I've gone once already, it's up to you. I'm still probably at my presentation somewhere, but it's up to you guys.
I would, I agree. You have an idea of what you're doing, and have done the presentation before, and I, like I said, I'm going to Minneapolis to a conference, so I would just make, I would make the motion to approve Ron, or approve to pay the expenses for Ron to go to Washington DC.
I'll second that. It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? I'm glad you want to go. I'm glad you've been there before, I think it's, you would represent the county well being there.
Thanks.
Me, too.
Is this funding going to be paid out of lost funds?
We could.
It would make sense to me.
Yeah, so what it's for.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next we have is a Heartland Risk Pool Renewal Documents. That's these right here, we had a, went through it here an hour ago, and these are our updated version, we do this annually, of our new insurance rates. Our mod factor has gone down, which is good for the county.
Mm-hmm.
It is .77, I believe is what it was, which is a very good mod factor. The county should be proud of that as well.
I can do it.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool Renewal Documents.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next we have is a Statement of Understanding with Central Iowa Community Services for Service Coordinator Position. Ron, I'm going to ask you about this one.
Yeah. I'll try to make it as simple as possible here. With our transition of our case management from county to region, then to our MCOs taking over, job descriptions have changed. Our case management for our clients has gone to the MCOs, and we've lost case managers to the MCOs. So, we're working on a skeleton group right now, as we transition our clients to the MCOs. It has a whole new view now on how we handle our clients, so we have new job descriptions for the skeletal crew that we have working with our region now. You can't even say county anymore as such, it's our region. And, so that's what we're doing, we're changing job descriptions, and, and we've lost our case management to the MCOs, so that's all that's going on, is a Statement of Understanding on the change of the job description of one employee, and that's Mary Rosendahl. So, she was case manager since 98, and now she's going to be addressed as a Service Coordinator Specialist. Did I cover it? Okay.
Date of motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Statement of Understanding for Mary Rosendahl.
Just this Statement of Understanding.
Yep. I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, to make the motion, Statement of Understanding. Any discussion? The funds out of this will be paid 100% out of regional funds.
Yes.
Also, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is the Change of Status of Community Services.
I'll make a motion to approve the Change of Status for Mary Rosendahl, Position Service Coordinator Specialist, salary $52,917. This is out of regional money, it's a hiring, full-time, and again, Mary was a case manager since July of 98, so she's basically made a lateral move to Service Coordinator Specialist.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is MICA on Data Storage and Disaster Recovery.
Yes. I just wanted to tell you guys an update of what we're doing in the IT department. We are looking at replacing and updating our storage and backups, so this is related to our day-to-day functions, and our ability to get backups should we had anything from a virus, to a power outage, to disaster. And so we've looked at a variety of solutions. Currently, we have a solution where we have our main device is actually over the sheriff's office, or the law enforcement center, and it's over there because that's a secure location, and a good structure that has a generator connected to it. And our backup solution is actually over here in the courthouse. They're identical units, and you can basically swap them out. And that's what we've been doing, and it's been working very fine. If one were to go down, we can swap them out and be a lickety-split. But it's also expensive, because you have to buy two units, and these units are... But it's also expensive because you have to buy two units and these units are not cheap. I don't, I haven't looked at the invoice from when they bought these five, six years ago, but we're talking $100,000 plus for both units. Okay? So now it's time to update them. And so we've been looking at other solutions for two reasons. We're trying to find something a little more economical feasible, economically feasible, or at least more cost-effective, so we don't have this humongous price tag every five to six years. And we also would like a better backup solution that is not just across the street. So, you know, if we have an event that could actually damage the courthouse, the chances of it damaging the sheriff's office are high. They're right in the same location. Ideally, you would want something far removed. Even across the town is better than what we have now in terms of location. So what we're looking at, and this is just kind of FYI, this has all been budgeted for in the IT department, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware. So what we're looking at is replacing one of our devices. It will be in the law enforcement center, in the secure location with the generator backup. And then we are going to be doing our backup solution as a service with the company. It'll be at a secure data center location in Des Moines. And this is what we're considering is a company that we already have done business with for the last five or six years. So this is not a new business arrangement with the company. So how that affects users day-to-day, absolutely doesn't at all. Where it might provide a change is if we were to have a disaster recovery situation, whatever that may be. All of our data would be backed up and it would be in Urbandale. And so there's time that instead of it being like an hour to switch things out or less, we would need to copy all that data to a new storage device and then transport it to Eldora. So we're talking like a day and a half is what we've estimated. Most companies give like a four-hour guarantee, but if they have to, there's time. They would respond in four hours, but there's time to copy our data too and that just would take time. It would be all backed up on their equipment, their responsibility. We toured the data center and it's a very good facility. Everything you'd want, you know, multiple backups for generators and security, climate control and just yada, yada, yada. So it's just kind of an FYI to let you know and to let other departments know should we have a disaster that we're talking a day and a half. And that's just for our stuff, you know, when we really start talking about a disaster, it's hard to know without knowing the disaster. But when we had our hailstorm, you know, the courthouse was closed the next day. It's not like we were up and doing business anyway. There are connections and data that's related to the state and the sheriff's office and the treasurer's office. We have no control over that. So if their equipment is damaged, that's a state replacement. So that may take a day or longer. I mean, we can't even control that. There may be hardware issues that people might have where we have to replace computers anyway before we can get them up running. So it's, it's not like, oh, we'd all be running up in a day and a half either because there's just so many different aspects. There's cleanup, you know, it just kind of depends on what the event is. So we feel really comfortable in saying a day and a half for the core functions that we will be responsible for. And it's also an economic decision. This is a good value, you know, an annual cost of about $20,000. It's a good value, you know, just to get like, have it all ready to go on a machine that, you know, within two hours can be driven up to Eldora. We're talking another $10,000, $15,000 a year. And we feel like that's not an expense that is necessary for the cost. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know in terms of, this was, we've been kind of looking at our options with different companies for the last several months and we realized it's not just a storage, you know, it quickly talks into, it becomes a disaster recovery issue. And we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what the IT department was deciding. But barring a disaster, nothing will change for anybody anyway. So it was just an FYI.
How would that work if we get a virus or they get a virus?
So how it works locally is you have a unit that kind of basically has two partitions and things are backed up like every five minutes in one partition. And then there's like snapshots that are taken to the other partition on an hourly. So if you were to get a virus on a machine and you get it disconnected from the network and stuff, you could go back to like the previous hour and grab a snapshot. So that, it did, that's all done right here online. It's called a dual controller on a machine. And so that would be done in-house. That has nothing, this is a hardware failure kind of situation. So, you know, someone goes in there and literally takes it, the machine, and smashes it up. Or if it, you know, a tornado strikes the building and damages the hardware, then we're talking about a, that's where that kicks into that backup and it's a hardware replacement issue.
Okay. Any questions?
Would we, would we still need the, the other backup at the sheriff's office in case something happened here?
Well, what happens is we start doing this, two machines, this kind of replaces that off-site backup. But we also have other backup solutions. We have a software called Vee that backs up to some other hardware. So we have, we have multiple, we have multiple backups going on, not just one thing. So we have about two or three. And actually what happens is we will take our existing equipment that we have right now that we're using across the street with each other and we're going to redeploy those, that hardware into a different backup solution that we'll have in-house. So it's kind of like our, our little backup, not the major backup that would have as a service. So kind of have created some redundancies, so we have different options. And some are beneficial for certain types of backup, backing up whether we're replacing someone's virtual machine or, you know, a virus situation. We kind of would implement different options considering the situation. But the overall picture is kind of a hardware failure, that device sitting here, which these, these devices are not prone to hardware. We've had one of these devices for the last six years. We've never had a problem with it. So these are, these are good machines. Yeah. But these are, these are built, and all of them that we've looked at, they're built to do what it is they do. So these are long-term storage solutions. And mostly the biggest change here is removing our, our off-site from across the street to really off-site and out of town. Which is just a better solution for a disaster recovery. So anyway, it's just a, like I said, inform and make sure everyone knows. We didn't want any, I guess, surprises, you know, it'd be one thing, like we have a plan should something, you know, happen here in Eldora. But we just want to make sure everyone knows what that plan is. And it's acceptable risk. It always come, you know, we're, I've talked to several departments and, you know, we're not a hospital. You know, we're, you know, we got to keep dispatch running. There's services that we provide, but we're not, we're not in the same class as, as some businesses that have to, you know, have to have not only data backup solutions, but hardware backup solutions. And, you know, we've got plans in place, but we don't have to work under the timeframe that some of those levels have to. That's it.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Oh, thanks, MICA.
Well, next we go into the HIPAA compliance contract with Contingency Group. MICA?
Okay. Jessica and I have been evaluating some options and as you're, I don't even remember our titles exactly. HIPAA Security Officer and HIPAA Compliance Officer. We are well aware of that we are not fully equipped to handle all the issues related to HIPAA security and compliance. And in part of my visiting and working with other counties, there is a company that has come to the forefront that comes highly recommended that basically provides services for HIPAA compliance. They provide review of all the documents. They provide help with updating the documents and templates for the documents. They provide training for all the employees and a method of tracking all that training so we can keep track of who actually has partaken in the training and, you know, check them off the list. They provide, they'll make sure you get it done. I mean, that's no big, small feat right there in terms of getting you a timeline and getting you homework and getting you HIPAA compliant in all aspects. And they also, should we have an incident, and people in the business talk about not when, but, or not if, but when you have a HIPAA compliance issue, they will be onsite to help you. So let's say if we actually had someone come in to do a HIPAA audit on us, they will be there to help represent what our county is doing. So that is in no small, because these are, these, these compliance issues can have very, very, very expensive fines. And so we recommend the, the cost for the service for the county is $4,4200 a year. It's completely cloud-based, so we create accounts for, for all users and they can do it from any computer home or so if you have traveling staff, they don't have to be sitting here. It's not onsite. And I think it would be prudent for the county to, to do an agreement with this, with this company. I think we've researched several of them and I just, I think that they're an excellent value for all the services they provide. And Jessica and I would be the first to admit that we need to have better equipment in terms of HIPAA compliance. And I think it's also important, should, you know, we were thrust into these roles in the last 12 months and there's a lot to learn. And so as staff can change and the laws change and the compliance issues change, I think it's important to have a company that is national that deals with this every day. I mean, this is their bread and butter and they are way more knowledgeable and can keep up with that knowledge more than, than we can here in the county.
I totally agree. Because I was in that position or got thrown into that too in the past and I mean, it's just like you just hold your breath, but nothing happens.
Yeah, nothing happens on your watch. Yeah.
Yep.
There will be some changes that'll come out of that and so we'll just have to make employees aware that there are some security issues. I know it'll come down the pipeline and I'll just, you know, it'll be out of my hands. I'll just be the messenger. So.
Well, I would go ahead and make the motion to approve the HIPAA compliance contract with Contingency Group for $4,200 a year.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is an application. Thank you for that presentation, MICA. Next is an application for the fireworks permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for fireworks permit for the Jensen family on the, on their 4th of July celebration. John Jensen.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded for the Jensen family 4th of July celebration, July's. It's, any discussion? It's a July 2nd, 2016 with the date of the 3rd. Any more discussion?
I was there last year, but safe.
Alright. Harry, Harry, no more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Discussion update on Sanitarian Position.
Well, I'm on the Board of Health and also Greenbelt Home Care. The Board of Health did make an amendment to their agreement with Greenbelt Home Care to take the Sanitarian duties out of Greenbelt Home Care. We are currently sharing the Sanitarian Position with Franklin, or with Story County. And I believe she said her last day here was on the 17th. And she'll be doing, finishing up paperwork for us for the rest of this month. And her last day will be May 31st. And then we'll be without a Sanitarian. The Board of Health also met with Franklin County regarding the possibility of sharing with their Sanitarian, their current Sanitarian through the end of this fiscal year. They, and he is retiring in June. And they are in the process of doing interviews to fill that position in Franklin County. And we've also, our Board of Health has also held the discussion with them about the possibility of sharing their new hire for the following year, fiscal year. And hopefully into the future, if that's, if that's, if an agreement can be made between the two counties. What happens after May 31st, if there's no agreement signed, I don't know. It's not going to be a fun situation for our contractors for septic systems. Well water testing is just kind of being put off right now. I know there's been a lot of requests for arsenic tests due to the article in the Alphos paper and maybe here too. So anyway, this is their busy season. It's just not a good time to have this situation. So it's being worked on by the two Boards of Health, but there's no agreement signed at this point in time. My preference would be that we would have our own county Sanitarian. I think there would be enough duties to keep, keep them fairly busy and enough opportunities for providing additional services. But I do know Franklin County is going to be providing, they do provide additional services and if we can come up with a sharing agreement, we'll, we'll know in probably a year whether that's going to work out or not.
Covered everything we know.
Yeah.
The Sanitarian's the employee of the Board of Health. Correct? I think that was about the only thing.
However, it's employee of Board of Health, then it goes through us for paying our share if we share person or the salary. But then we also, you know, the revenues that they bring in would go towards that also.
Alright.
I recognize Amanda here. I don't know.
We can ask her.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Did you have any questions?
Well, on the installer part, on the end, the previous Sanitarians that we, you know, have had and dealt with in Harden County, as an installer point of view, I don't feel that they have been exactly qualified in that area as an installer, as a time of transfer inspector. We are held to hold, you know, different credentials, whether it be, you know, I had approved to Dan Olson at the DNR that I had two years of onsite field experience. And then to do the COWAT, which is the Iowa Installer, it's kind of what we've talked about when Christie was here previously, about making it, you had to be a certified installer to install in the county. That is the credential that is associated with that. But the previous Sanitarians have not had to hold any credentials and it's, it's hard to say hand over my paperwork to someone who doesn't have any experience, who really does not know anything as far as the septic industry goes. And there is more to the job than just coming out, walking up and accepting a check for payment from us. You know, it's just getting more involved, I guess. When I dealt with Margaret the past couple of months, she's been phenomenal. She comes out, Harden County does not require a soil analysis or soil profiling. They just require a PERC test, which is you dig a hole, you see how well, you know, the soil takes the water. But it is virtually just a snapshot of how it's taking that day. It's going to take better in August per se than it does in April or May. So doing the soil profiling, she takes a probe, takes it down and it's actual glimpse, so she can feel it, she can touch it. She can tell where the limiting layer is. That was so beneficial for her and I guess as an installer's outlook perspective, I would like to see that aspect looked at more than, you know, a PERC test. Because we went to a job site and any other installer would have said, oh, I'm going to put it right there because that was the most logical, you know, it would have been the most cost-effective for that customer. And when Margaret went over and she did the actual soil probe, she brought it out and, you know, felt it and it's like this soil is, it is not removable. It has, it cannot go there. So it kind of protects the county having someone who is knowledgeable, you know, because ultimately I don't know how much the county could become back on because the Sanitarian signed off on it. They've given the approval for that to go there. And not having someone educated or know the different components or their reasoning just kind of opens, it leaves a big open area.
So you're asking for a Sanitarian that has a higher knowledge of?
Right. And the people that we, you know, go to conferences with, because we have to have so many, you know, CEUs per year to be able to, you know, hold these credentials. Our Sanitarians have not had to go to those classes. They don't really know anything. And when we go to these, like Margaret, she's
As much.
What's that?
They know something, just not as much.
Correct. But they're, they were certified through NEHA, you know, which is National Animal Health Association. And so that's, you know, we want someone that we can go to, that we can ask a question, that it's not, hold on, I need to go and talk to so-and-so and so-and-so. Occasionally, yes, I get it. No one knows everything right on the spot. Occasionally, yes, I get it, no one knows everything right on the spot, but at least being able to, have a little bit more knowledge, I guess, and experience is what my biggest concern would be.
It sounds to me like, the perk, I know the perk test requirement is in, I don't know if it's in the job description or what it's in, but that's something that I think then I need to go to the Board of Health and tell them, they need to address that issue. Because I, I do understand what you're saying and someone else's, I don't know if that was discussed maybe at Franklin County too, they don't do the perk test. Yet their, their current sanitarian said that we require the perk test and he said we don't do that, we do the soil sampling and he kind of explained it and, which made total sense to me.
Right.
So I think that's something that I can take to the Board of Health and get that part changed, but I share your same concerns. I think we need somebody that can tell you, that's on your level, this is what you need, rather than you making the decision on your own and, I mean, I, I believe you're a trustworthy company and whatever, but if you get some fly-by-night people in here, which I don't know if there are, but that are just maybe from farther distance, they are right here to take the repercussions of something that they've done and it's not done correctly. And I, I know of an instance currently on a piece of property where a system was approved a couple of years back and now it doesn't comply. And the realtor told them they probably should get an attorney. Well, so I understand the liability issue you're talking about.
Right, well, and then with the perk test, you're kind of at the honor of the installer that's saying that he went out there and there's no, you know, checks and balances, no one's going out there and ensuring that, but then the county's also, there's a seventy-five dollar fee that, you know, we pay to the county for reading the perk tests and we...
It never seems...
It's, it's an honor thing that these contractors are doing that. Well, the honor system isn't always reliable, if you know what I mean. So this is ensuring that, you know, if the sanitarian does the soil profiling, she's actually going out there, you know, or they, or he, or whoever it is, is going out there doing it, so they're actually making sure that it is being done. Their, their actual job is to go out and tell you, this is the type of system that you need, this is the type, this is where I want you to put this system because this is where, you know, the most permeable soil.
I mean, it protects the county, but it, more importantly, it protects...
The homeowner.
The homeowner. And I guess my concern that, you know, through all of this, I, one of my concerns is we really don't, our Board of Health really doesn't have any say in who Franklin County hires, so it is going to be something that we're going to have to, our Board of Health is going to have to discuss and if you guys have input to add to it, let me know so I can take it to our Board of Health. Because Franklin County is not, I don't want to say they're not allowing us any decision-making, we can sit in on, you know, their discussions and that type of thing, but these, I agree, these are things that we want for our county and we just hope that that's, that type of person with those qualifications is hired in Franklin if we are going to do the sharing. Otherwise, I would like to look at, at hiring our own person so that we can make sure these checks and balances are in place, but, I mean...
And there's more to the sanitarian job than just leach fields also.
Right, well...
I mean, we're just talking about leach fields at the moment.
Right, well, and the sharing of it, we ran into issues over and over and over with Margaret, just because of the time limit that she had coming up here, she was allowed one day and it's very hard when, you know, we have multiple systems that are going on just, you know, it is busy at times.
Right, and currently with Story County, they're just helping out. It's, it's not the sharing agreement that we're talking about with twenty-eighty with Franklin County, that's just to get us to a point.
No, I completely...
Because we don't have anybody.
No, I completely, completely understand that. It's, my concern would be if, you know, they're sharing, we wouldn't be able to access them as much and as easily as needed because there's, you know, there's times where we call them because, you know, it's rainy on a Tuesday and we don't plan on doing anything, if the forecast is rain for Wednesday, but we wake up Wednesday and it's been moved out. Well, if that sanitarian's in Franklin County that day, to call her and have her come down and do a pre-site analysis, you know, it, it's kind of a domino effect, it could, you know, it's going to put us behind, which is going to, you know, potentially push back a sale of a property, it's, it could just be a domino effect.
A lot of this information needs to be shared with our Board of Health so that they understand all the variables involved, so that as they negotiate with the Board of Health from Franklin County, that we can negotiate properly if we are going to be sharing for at least a year to see how it goes.
But actually, this sharing agreement I think would be between the two Boards of Health, it really wouldn't be, it wouldn't be us, but...
But you're presenting to us and the information is very valuable, I'm thinking that they need to be aware of this information.
Definitely, and that's, I will either share it or, Amanda, maybe you would, I mean, we have a Board of Health meeting at the hospital, lately it's been once a month, but usually it's kind of every other month, but if that's something you'd be willing to come to...
Absolutely.
It's usually about seven, if, if that's something any of the contractors would be able to attend, I would bring that up to Dr. O'Laughlin, see if that would be useful. Okay?
For a county our size, as you do research, there aren't too many full-time sanitarians that are hired. That would be a hurdle if we were looking at a full-time sanitarian, so...
It would be hard to be in that price range with that expertise without sharing.
To get all the certifications that would be appropriate.
Right, well, most importantly would be education, I mean, that's, that's the highest, you know, then they have our back and, you know, two, two heads are better than one, you know, you get two people out there that have knowledge about, you know, throwing different ideas back and forth, it's, it's just a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, Roger Sutton, yes, services and facilities and kind of like camps and visited with Trent yesterday, he came and did some service for us and heard a bit of the frustrations and I guess I'm, I'm also the Chair of the Variance Board for the county and, and listening to a lot of the discussions today, there are fundamental services that the community, that the county has to be responsible for in a major way, or why should I bring my company to Harden County and do business? And I think, I'm on the various board to keep it in the county, keep it in the neighbors and I know it's expensive, I know there's a bazillion mandates from HIPAA on that the Board is responsible for, but I think there are these crucial things that come to health and water. I'm dealing with septic systems, I also deal with my pool, so now it's going to inspect our pools in the county this summer. And the last nineteen years, I never know who to expect to show up, I never know who to expect to show up with what qualifications. They might bring the book along and throw the book at me and all of a sudden my pool's dead. Well, it's operated safely, I want to operate safely, I want to do septic safely, I want to do, I just drilled a new well, I now need money reimbursement for that and now I have no one to go to. So where are we in this, beside the contractors, we as entities doing business in the county, where do we go, who do we talk to? And it sounds like I need to be at that health meeting too, to, to share, to represent us, but somewhere, and Lance and I have talked about the mandates that are thrown on the Board of Supervisors, from when I talked to Jim Johnson about it many years ago to now, it's grown by like two thousand mandates. Well, somewhere we have to push back against that and say, health, water, safety, guys, we want to protect our county or we're going to all be thrown into this regional thing and who I have to deal with is from somewhere over there or Des Moines or DC, I don't want to go there, I like doing business in Harden County, I want to stay here for the next twenty years and do this, but I'm just, you've got a lot on your plate and there's, everybody coming at you for money and it costs a bazillion dollars to know what, we're talking about sewer running out of the river or whatever, it's a big deal. So just encourage you to stand your ground, push against Des Moines if you have to and push against DC if you have to, because we want to live here as neighbors. I want to see you on the street and say, hey, how's things going or what do you want to do, can we help you do it, so...
Who does your pool inspections currently?
We...
Because we haven't...
Well, it was Greenbelt.
Was it Butler County?
Well, that was a few years ago.
I think Butler...
I lost track, yeah, I don't...
What?
I think Butler County did our tanning inspection, it was last year.
Yeah, we've had a lot of talk about Sarah Gordo, the guy that wrote the codebook, came down from Des Moines three, four, or five years ago, and the guy that wrote the book, so you never know, I have nothing to hide and I, but we all want to be safe in the county, we want people to come to our county and, and it's a huge mandate, but it's, it's the core of what I think, and you three have that ultimate insane responsibility to protect our county and if we give it to Area Six or we give it to somebody else, it's, it's gone. And they will come with their landates and it'll be no more cake and we talk, so, this is my...
Thank you. Any other discussion on anything?
I'll then chair this information with our Board of Health.
Until the meantime, what do we do as installers if no sanitarian after next Tuesday?
We've been pushing.
You know, I mean, we have permits that need to be approved, we have inspections that are, you know, needing to be signed off on, so where, where do I have people pick up off swap loan applications from?
I don't have that answer.
Or, you know, issuing, the permits are the biggest because we, you know, we can't do an install until we have a permit number.
And I, I did call Sean Dietz, who's the Chair of the Board of Health in Franklin County yesterday, he said the temporary agreement between them and us that would take us through the end of June is with their county attorney and he was going to get ahold of him and see if he could get that pushed through. And I, we did attend their Board of Health meeting earlier this month in Franklin County and their Board really wants to help, help us in the meantime. And they went ahead and gave him authority to sign the agreement once the county attorney has approved it, so as soon as, as soon as they get it signed, they're going to get it to us. I guess, I don't know if Margaret would be willing to come another time, I guess, I don't know. I mean, if she, she's, I did get the email that she is our sanitarian more or less through the end of May, so I guess, that was, I was on the phone, the Chair of yesterday afternoon and I did not get through or get replies from a couple of the people that I tried to contact yet, but it's a good question. I would, I will talk to Merrily Lawler again and what they're doing currently is taking names and phone numbers of people that call.
Well, and another concern is if people are, you know, if installs are being done, no one's doing the checks and balances for permits, so homeowners are, you know, with the assumption that they've got a permit and no one's there making sure that a permit number was issued, you know, so that's another, I mean, just a concern that we get faced with all the time, you know, hey, do you have a permit number for this or, you know, we had an install done last year.
Yeah.
We can contact Franklin County, try to see if they can push that through so we can get you some definite answers. The, the hardest part for me to answer is I don't have the authority to do it, this Board doesn't have the authority. The authority lies on the Board of Health, so we can push the Board of Health to get this through.
And when is their next meeting?
They'll have to have a special one.
Yeah, and they're willing to do that, so it's just a matter of getting Franklin County to sign it and he was going to talk to his county attorney yesterday or today and then it would go to our Board of Health and I don't care if I have to drive up there and get it and take it to, to bring it down here, but they are willing to, the Chair is willing to hold a special meeting so that we can get this done.
Okay.
I don't give you the answer you want to hear, I know.
But I do know they were making some changes to the agreement that I took up and asked for them to approve. And I don't know what those changes are.
But, but hopefully when we have an end result, it's better than we've had throughout the past in a lot of the things that you, you brought up.
And hopefully our sharing agreement from July first on will...
Right, so it is, I mean, it, we are going to share or that's still kind of...
They haven't decided yet, they're working on it.
That's what we're working, that's what our Board of Health is working towards, but it has, there's, and their, Franklin County is working on that agreement also, but...
All right, I think that's all the questions.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I keep in communication so that you know when the next Board of Health meeting is and where, so I think that...
If both of, well, I think I have your email and your phone number, Amanda.
And then I can be in touch.
Yeah, okay, okay, otherwise I was going to say if you get it to me, I can let you know when it is too, so, okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is a change of status on Secondary Roads Department.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Samuel Shindalar. He's, will be a seasonal laborer at ten dollars an hour, temporary seasonal, part-time. Dates of employment are May twentieth of this year through December thirty-first of sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Here you go, no more, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have on the agenda is Secondary Roads Iowa DOT Budget Amendment. He has asked that we reschedule a meeting for Tuesday at nine o'clock in the morning, it is not done, there was some paperwork that is, they're working through to get it done.
So I'll make a motion to table the Secondary Roads Iowa DOT Budget Amendment until Tuesday at nine o'clock, that would be the, is that the thirty-first?
I believe so.
Yes, thirty-first, May thirty-first.
So we'll have a special meeting that day? Do we, okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to table the Iowa DOT Budget Amendment till Tuesday, nine o'clock, May thirty-first. Any discussion?
Do we just want to change our board meeting to that day that week or...
They can't.
They can't, okay, okay.
Is that something that you'll need recorded? Like a regular public meeting?
I don't really know if it needs to be recorded or not, it's just this budget amendment, we can.
I, it's up to you guys and I hear some...
We can, it's not, it's not an issue, it's not an issue with you.
Yeah, I think I'm available.
Any more discussion? Here you go, no more, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, Secondary Roads, he's out there working on some issues, some of this is the budget itself, so he's not here. Any other business?
I just have a reminder to the public that if you don't have your property taxes paid by now, you want to, because the June tax sale's coming up, it'll be held June twentieth, they'll have to have their taxes paid the Friday before that so that they don't go to tax sale.
Okay, thank you. Any other business? Here you go, I can ask for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we're adjourned.